Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank God for America.
Kathleen, roll call, please.
Fleming?
Here.
McCambo?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
All right. We have some Mayor's Awards tonight, and again, you guys, I won't give you the drill. I get excited when I get a chance to give some of these away. And we have two great candidates tonight. The first is, brings back memories. The first time when I found out I was a man at a very young age, I was delivering or picking up trash on my dad's trash route, and afterwards, we got to go eat Jerry's breakfast. And every time I go down there, I think about my pops, and the food hasn't changed, it's still just as good. So be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to recognize Dick Garniops and the employees of Jerry's Main Lunch for being model Burlingtonians. Your commitment to serving the best breakfast food on the planet because it's good like that. Over the last 71 years is a tribute to your commitment to find taste buds everywhere. Jerry's has helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, play, and eat. On July 3rd, 2017, this Mayor's Award is presented to Dick Garniops and the employees of Jerry's Main Lunch. Come on down. I can get a picture with you guys. Give that to you. Lose. Have one of these. You can have one of these. You've got colored hair. One of these for you. You've made me miss several times. One of these for you. So we got, all right, we got to know. Let's, yeah. Turn around. Right-handed. Right-hand. All right, everybody come on in. All right. I want to ask if you would come and have a word, please? Please do.
See that, Jerry's.
Please have a word, Dick.
Jerry's has been there as long as I've been here. Started in '46, I was born in '42. So my twin brother and I used to walk from Sullivan School down the wood steps to Main Street, from up on Third, every day after school, and meet my mom. So it's just hard to think of it not being there. And I know a lot of customers are that way. We're now into the fifth generation of some families that have eaten down there. So it's been a long ride, but a good one.
A good one.
A good one.
Good one. Thank you, Dick.
This next one, I just met her for the first time tonight, but there's something about this kid, she's special. And there was an article in the paper the other day, and when I read it, I was inspired. And I like to be inspired. And inspiration comes in a lot of different shapes, sizes, and ages. And this young lady inspired me, and I'm glad to be giving her award today. She's decathlon, is that what it is? Tri- triathlon? Yeah. Triathlon? Yeah, I don't know any about that stuff. It sounds like work to me, but anyways. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. I read the article about you in the newspaper and could not help but be inspired. Your drive and self-motivation is exceptional for a young girl your age. You're a true winner, and you helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On July 3rd, 2017, this Mayor's Award is presented to Kennedy Ritter. Come on down.
What am I supposed to say?
You can just say whatever you want to. Let me ask you a question.
Okay.
So what made you decide to get into that sort of thing?
Well, I grew up always watching my dad do triathlons, and I've always wanted to be like him, so.
Yay, Dad. We're ready to go, Dad.
Enough said. Enough said. Find yourself a shooting star and aim for it. All right, very proud of you. Keep up the good work. Hope to see you in the paper next time. We're going to let everybody dip on out of here that came for that, so you don't have to stick around for the rest of the stuff. So if you want to leave now, you certainly can. Thanks for coming down, you guys.
Thanks, Dick.
We should have a little support.
Hey, what speed limit, man?
The whole Ritter family came down today. All right, all right.
Thank you, Steph.
You're right, Tim. I almost didn't recognize Steph. Okay, next on the agenda tonight is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Item 1, Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. The floodgates, all right. They're excited. Thank you, sir. All items, all matters listed under Item 1, Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council, and they will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent, we have the usual: finances miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have four resolutions. The first is a resolution approving purchase of a 2018 Elgin Pelican NP for Public Works Street and Sewer Division. The second is a resolution establishing a no parking zone on the south side of the 1100 block of Arch Street in its entirety. The third is a resolution approving renewal of the three-year lease agreement for the operation of the Iowa store located in the Port of Burlington Welcome Center. The fourth is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with HR Green, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, for general consulting services for the Burlington, Iowa wastewater treatment facility for the period of July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018. We have five public hearings set for July 17th. First is a consideration of sale property locally known as 718 Columbia Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. The second is consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Oak Street Right-of-Way located east of Bluff Road, Burlington, Iowa. The third is consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with John and Doris Champagne for encroachment into Right-of-Way adjacent to the property located at 1500 Madison Avenue, Burlington, Iowa. The fourth is consideration of plans and specs for the 2017 Harrison Avenue Storm Sewer improvements. And then the fifth is consideration of the plans and specs for the 2017 Flow Metering Project. We also have an appointment, Mayor Protem?
Brian Bros has been on the City Planning Commission for the last three years, and his term expired. He'd like to be reappointed, and I'm certainly in favor of that, and we do want to thank all of our volunteers.
Okay. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed? I see none. Council?
I just have one quick comment. I don't want to remove anything. On my way home to get ready for the council meeting, I saw a big truck hooking up to our Pelican Street sweeper. It died. This is perfect timing. They're without a street sweeper.
We had a hydraulic hose first, so yes, we had to use services of a tow truck back in the shop.
Thanks for the inside information, Nick. We knew we could count on you. All right.
Your Honor, I move the approval of all items listed under Item 1, Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Kathleen, let's take it to vote.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Well done. This is time set for hearing for consideration of sale of property locally known as 1336 Garnet Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions continued from June 19th, 2017, City Council meeting.
Right. The city had received interest for the purchase of property located at 1336 Garnet Street. This property was acquired through the abandoned building program, and due to the condition of the building, it was demolished. The purchasers shall pay a minimum of $500 or 10% down. Upon approval of sale, the entire amount shall be paid within 30 days of approval of sale by council. Purchaser must build the structure with all necessary permits within 180 days of purchase date, or purchaser must combine property with an existing adjacent property that already has a structure on it. Property transfer shall be by quitclaim deed. Such deed shall be transferred to purchaser upon payment. We have two bids right now. They're from both adjacent property owners, and they've split the $500 cost. At this point, does anyone from the audience who has not already submitted a bid wish to submit a bid to purchase the property?
Okay, is there?
Oh, yeah.
Let's go back to the question. Are there any other bids from the audience on this property? I see none. We've got the bid, so do we need to, how do I need to proceed on that, Kathleen?
You can ask if there's any further bids, otherwise we can close the hearing.
Okay, any further bids? There are none.
Your Honor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Kathleen.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move the resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 1336 Garnet Street, City of Burlington, with conditions as listed on our form. $350 to Mrs. Slommy and Nelson Real Estate for $150.
Second.
Awesome. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Awesome. Next, we have, this is time set for hearing for consideration of plans and specs for the 2017 Law Enforcement Center. Publications been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed by law.
I don't have anything unless Chief Beard does.
Chief?
Earlier, there wasn't, there haven't been any changes from the work session, so all you have in your packet is where we're at, so.
Sounds good.
Okay.
For the sake of audience at home that don't watch work sessions, we need to show a quick little thing and...
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
You want me to go back over the floor plans, and we can go over the budget process for this too, if you'd like.
Just to give them a taste, how are you? See if, but yeah, that sounds fantastic.
So I'll try to move through this a little bit quicker than we did at the work session, but this is the current drive-up location, and everything you see that's striped will be part of the demo work. All this will be removed, so we can really open up this parking lot. So this would be the Valley Street side, and this would be the Main Street side. In the basement, zoom in just a little bit, but if you recall, this kind of the center in the section here will be the women's locker room, men's locker room, toilet, shower facilities, and over here we'll have the fitness room. And the rest of this will just be all unfinished space in the basement. Now I'll move up to the first floor, which is currently the bank lobby or where you do your banking now. This would be the Jefferson Street side. Down here would be the Main Street side. This is kind of where you enter the bank now from the Jefferson Street side, the lobby area. And from there, kind of in the center here, will be evidence processing and evidence storage. This will be records. Down here we'll have animal control and parking. And then along here and this far south wall will be all shift commanders' offices. And this will be an officer's room for report writing, report taking. And then we'll have the briefing room, workroom, supplies. We got gun vault, gun cleaning, ammunition storage will be up here in this corner, break room. As you move on up to the second floor, this will be the multi, I'll move it over here a little bit, the multi-use room, which, and I don't know if we went into too much detail, I mean, we can use this not only for our trainings, but regional training, but with that said, I mean, if we have, let's say, a Boy Scout function or some community function where they need a lot of space, I mean, we would obviously make this available to groups, citizens groups. Let's say South Hill Neighborhood Association would like to have a meeting, or whatever the case may be, we would have a calendar for this room and make that available to the public as well. And then interview rooms. Again, this is just unfinished space. That's one of those vaults we talked about, and we'd kind of like, if we could, we have some display cases that were given to us by Camera Land before they closed, and we've saved those display cases. And we have quite a few artifacts, if you will, for the makings of maybe some type of police museum. That's what we'd like to do with this. But again, it's unfinished space. It's just something that hopefully we could make the best use of that. And then these are administrative offices, the chief, the admin assistant, the two majors. And then this is for investigative command, and in here will be this open space for investigators and task force investigators, copy room, workroom, administrative briefing room, conference-type room. This room here is like our major case room, where investigators could collectively get together and have a, like, digital presentations. All of our case management would happen in here. And over here, again, our interview rooms, staff bathrooms, bathrooms that would be available to the public. So that's kind of the general layout of the building and how it's going to look. And in part of your packet, which you already have, but we can put it up there so the viewers at home could see it, was information that was provided by our construction manager, Carl A. Nelson. It kind of spells out the summary and the scope of the work that's going to be done. And then on the second page, it has all the different bid packages laid out that'll go out to bid for... We did this in, it looks like, 10 different bid packages for the prime contracts. And if you remember back when we talked about going through the construction manager process, this was a big component to that process, so we just didn't have one general contractor that was running the whole project. It's a construction manager is going to run the project with all of these sub-prime bids, if you will, if that makes sense to you. So then it's the timeline. I mean, obviously, tonight, we're going through the public hearing, and these bid documents will be released. We'll have a pre-bid meeting and a tour down at the bank. And then on the 26th, the bids will be due back here at City Hall. That timeline is still correct, August 7th. To the best of our knowledge, at the bank, at least, there's going to have their grand opening. So I would assume within a few days, they would not be occupying the bank anymore, or at least within a reasonable timeframe there. So we'd like to award those contracts. I think, actually, this might be a little bit of a change. I know there was some discussion, and I don't know where exactly, it ended up on August 4th.
Yeah, that's correct.
You can maybe speak to that. If you do, Perry, can I go up to the mic and introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry. My name's Perry Hines. I work for Carl A. Nelson, so I've been working with Chief Beard and Matt Beesman, who's the architect. Been working with them for the last seven months, studying the constructability of design and helping them keep the design within budget, and then understanding the function and the purpose of the building. As far as, Chief mentioned the schedule here, our revised schedule is we're going to ask, when we get the bids in July 26th, we'll interview and review all the bids together as a team, and then we'll bring them to the council for recommendations for approval on the 7th. And hopefully, we're working with the bank to get them moved out so that we can start September 5th. For the construction schedule, we have March in there, and that's mainly for construction. There's a lot of activities that are still going to happen after that. We've got furnishings that have to go in there, some specialty lockers that are going to have to go in there. Obviously, the department's going to have to move, and that's a big process. So I think the chief had spoke that, you know, his schedule for his department was out till June. And I think that's more realistic if you're looking at the whole project. But as far as construction goes, that March date is going to be a little bit closer to that, so.
Awesome.
Okay.
And so we see this budget here, Chief. Is this on target, what we...
Yeah, actually, it's less. I mean, it's under budget. If I remember correctly, we were right around that 5.1 or 5.2 total with, including the cost of the building.
Yeah.
So yeah, it's on target for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good deal. We're getting closer. Any questions from the audience? Council?
Thank you, Perry. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Forty seconds.
Speed roll in 2838 South Main Street here in Burlington. The way I understand it is there will be all those separate contracts, and Carl Nelson will manage all of those contracts. Is that the way I understood it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, you kind of look at it as Carl, we've employed Carl A. Nelson to look out for our best interests. I mean, they've not only managed it to date, but they'll also be on-site managing the project through completion. If I'm missing anything, Perry, feel free to speak to that.
No, that... I'll just add a little bit to that. So we will not be allowed, obviously, to bid on any construction part of the project. We're there strictly as management and full-time supervision to make sure that those prime contracts are getting the correct material, they're procuring it on time, and they get their construction on time, and then maintain quality, quality assurance on-site throughout the duration of the project, so.
Yep. And safety, though.
Yeah.
Have safety.
Safety, number one.
Let's wait you to finish up. Safety, number one. Good save. Council, are we satisfied?
Your Honor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move the approval of the plans and specifications for the 2017 Law Enforcement Center.
Second.
Moved in second. You have a vote on it.
Yes.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Yes.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Happily, yes.
This is going to be a great facility.
Looking forward to this.
No doubt. Long time coming.
I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Denmark Street Right-of-Way located west of South Main Street.
Second.
Second. Chuck?
The owner's desire to split the Right-of-Way with the north property owner purchasing 18 feet adjacent to their property, and the owner to the south purchasing the remaining Right-of-Way based on the original price of 500 offered to the initial owner, they would like to split this cost instead of being charged, each charged $500. There is an amendment that goes with this ordinance where the initial ordinance had each person paying $500, and the amendment splits up that $500 between the two adjacent property owners.
Sounds good.
You ready for that amendment now? Okay. I have a motion to amend Exhibit C, Condition Approval 1, Number 1 and Number 3, for the ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Denmark Street Right-of-Way located in South Street as follows. Conditions of approval. Vacated portion of Denmark Right-of-Way shall be sold to and combined with the adjacent parcels owned by John and Peggy Rhodes on the north, receiving 18 feet of Right-of-Way adjacent to the entire property, and Robbie L. and Dolores Levitt receiving the remaining vacated Right-of-Way on the south side of the Right-of-Way. Sell price for the vacated Right-of-Way shall be $500 total.
Okay. Thank you. Before we vote, I wasn't sure if I did. Was there anybody that had any comment or concern on that? Okay, well done. Okay, now let's vote on the amendment. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Well done.
I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of the alley Right-of-Way located north of Etna Street and east of South Plain Street.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
I almost fell asleep.
All right. Chuck?
There's no changes from the previous reading. The owner to the east desires to vacate and purchase the alley Right-of-Way. There would be an easement over the Right-of-Way for utilities.
Okay, I didn't hear that. Anybody from the audience, any questions or concerns? I see none. Council?
Your Honor, I do have another motion to amend. A motion to amend the motion of preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of the alley Right-of-Way located north of Etna and east of South Plain Street to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of the alley Right-of-Way located north of Etna Street and east of South Plain Street.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Let's vote on the amendment.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 126 Taxi Cabs and Vehicles for Hire of the Burlington, Iowa Code of Ordinances, and deleting Chapter 127 Vehicles for Hire Drivers in its entirety.
Second.
Move in second.
No changes.
Okay.
My...
Hold on one second.
No.
Any questions on this from the audience? Okay, I see none. Council? Are we good here?
Just not sure about if it would be appropriate for me to abstain from this, considering the Uber, or I don't know if that...
I don't think there would be an issue with you voting yes or abstaining. Or no, sorry.
Right.
You could also vote no. Just to put words in your mouth.
Okay.
I want you to make that call. Either way, we're good.
If you're not comfortable, then...
Yep.
Okay. Kathleen? Let's take the vote.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Abstain.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay. Well done. I appreciate that, and your counselor.
I have a resolution approving the preliminary plan of Ingram Subdivision.
Hold on.
I have one more.
Pardon me, I withdraw my statement.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending Section 170.50 Board of Adjustment of Chapter 170 Zoning Code of City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Chuck?
There's no changes from the previous reading. Basically, this would allow for special exceptions to be part of the zoning code with the zoning board of adjustment, considering approval of such request based on the provisions as listed. It would give the board some latitude to modify sections of the zoning code where certain circumstances may warrant it.
Okay. Any concerns or questions from the audience? I see none. Council?
I have a motion to amend. To amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending Section 170.50 Board of Adjustment of Chapter 170 Zoning Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance amending Section 170.50 Board of Adjustment of Chapter 170 Zoning Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Kathleen, let's go ahead.
I want to make a comment.
Okay.
I think, Mr. Davidson, I both have said that I think this is one of the smartest moves that the city has made when it comes to zoning. It's, there've been many, many times that people have come forward, and there's just been minor deviations in their properties that prevented them from making the improvements that they requested. And this gives some leniency to that and makes, I think, a lot of people's lives a lot easier, including the Board of Adjustment and the city councils, and staffs for that matter.
Yeah.
I just, I think it's just a great move.
Good deal. Anybody else got anything they want to add? Ditto. Okay, we take that ditto. Mark, let me just go. Let's vote on the amendment.
Fleming?
Hi.
McCambo?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Now it's my turn.
No, as amended.
Let's vote as amended.
Darn.
And then your next vote.
I think we make this too complicated.
Fleming?
Hi.
McCambo?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Counselor?
Resolution approving the preliminary plat of Ingram subdivision.
Second.
Charles?
This subdivision is in the two-mile review area, it is not inside city limits. There are four lots planned with an easement for access to the eastern two lots. Zoning code requires subdivisions of more than three lots to go through the preliminary plat process. With no staff comments and no issues at the county level, we are recommending going through with the preliminary and final plat process both at this meeting. The reason we're doing that is because nothing is going to change between preliminary and final plat. It's gonna stay the exact same, the preliminary plat just has a little bit more information on it regarding neighboring property owners and location of utilities. We're recommending approval of both plats at the same meeting.
Okay. Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. The audience has been lovely tonight. Counsel? Okay, Kathleen?
Fleming?
Hi.
McCambo?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Well done. Have a resolution approving the final plat of Ingram subdivision.
Second.
A second. You guys already know the demo on that. Is there anybody from the audience has any questions or concerns? I see none. Counsel? Kathleen?
Fleming?
Hi.
McCambo?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Well done.
We have a resolution approving a subordination agreement.
Second.
This home is part of the owner-occupied rehab grant project. The owner desires to refinance her mortgage loan. She is refinancing the amount of $58,715. The home is currently assessed at $83,000. She still has $3,628 remaining of the forgivable lien should she sell or move from the home. This would only apply for one more year per the requirements of the grant, and then she would have met her requirements and not owed any money should she move or sell. And this is 1103 Course Street.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
So, we only have an interest in this for another year?
For another year, yep.
I don't see any issue then.
Everybody else is good?
Yeah.
Okay, Kathleen?
Fleming?
Hi.
McCambo?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay, number four.
We have a resolution providing for a salary adjustment for the city manager.
Second.
Moved in second.
I don't have anything. I think Stephanie maybe has a better response than I would, anyway. I don't know if... Sorry to throw you up here, but...
You just shocked her.
We just want everybody to see, if you're looking lovely tonight, Steph.
I just did what I was instructed to do, so however you wanna explain.
Okay.
The 2.2% is the same amount that the union and non-union employees are getting.
Okay. Thank you, Steph. Counsel, does anybody have anything they want to?
I think, I would like to explain that the staff received a 2.25% pay increase. And normally, the council evaluates the city manager on an annual basis. I suggested to the mayor that with the type of year that we've had, that we could probably bypass the evaluation and move right on to making his raise increase effective with everybody else's on July 1st. And not to delay that any further with taking the time to do the evaluation. I don't know why, but it slipped by all five of us to get that done beforehand. My personal opinion is Jim's doing a fine job, and I can see no reason why he wouldn't get the same increase as everybody else.
Thanks for the declaration. Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns? I see none.
517 South Main Street, Burlington, Iowa, Freddie Sterling. I guess I got in on the tail end of this, so maybe I'll sit down and hear a little bit more. I'd rather hear a little bit more before I make a comment, 'cause I don't quite understand the raise or whatever you said.
I mean, we're not gonna... Does anybody else have anything they wanna add on that, or... 'Cause I think Tim pretty much said how we feel. Do you have, I mean, do you got any questions that you wanna ask on it, or are you just surprised he's getting on?
It just matches all of the other employees, both the union and non-union. They all got a two-point, or, excuse me?
Two point two five?
2.25 raise. So, we're just kinda trying to make it even across the board as far as everyone getting that 2.25. If that answers your question at all.
Yeah, when I was here, am I able to speak?
Yes, sir.
When I was here last time, and there was increase, and I mentioned about that. And I don't know what the comment was on it. Those that work in the city are under the managing of the city manager of those that are working in the offices, but never got in the comment on that. But yet, we had a raise for the city manager, which I really didn't object to it. I just thought that others should have an increase also.
Everybody else, everybody else is getting an increase, they've already got theirs, and we didn't have his review, so we're just, that's what this is about, because everybody else already got theirs.
Okay, I mean, with the last raise, I mean, a few months ago.
All other staff, I think, the confusion was this last October, I think, was when the Jim's raise...
Yeah, right.
City manager's raise was approved. All their staff's raises are approved and given on the beginning of the fiscal year, which is July 1st. So, that's the change in timeframe that you're probably seeing.
Is that coming now, is that what's coming now?
Staff has received their raise for this fiscal year. And so, it happened again, it happened the last year as well. Staff received their raise on July 1st.
I mean, they are receiving it now, is that what I'm saying?
Correct.
Was it approved at the same time back in October?
No.
Because that's what I mentioned about.
The staff raises are approved by the city manager. No?
By council.
City council.
By city council.
By council.
After negotiations with the unions, then we approve their contract, and it becomes effective on July 1st, which was just two days ago, so...
Okay, my, you know, I have no objection to that, I'm just one person with boys. I have no objection to that, but I mentioned that last year, and I don't think anyone made any comments to what I had mentioned. And so, that was my concern then, and I understand that the other city employees are getting that 2.5% raise, right?
2.25.
They already got it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that was what I was mentioning then, but no one responded to what I had to say.
That was a different, that was a different deal. It was a completely different deal. We were already, we had already established the negotiations for the union and non-union contracts. So, it was a completely different deal. That was just his annual evaluation from last year.
Okay.
And maybe I probably...
You know, I'm really, I'm really, really concerned. I don't mind the increases, but I mentioned when I was here last time, and, you know, concerning the taxes and everything going up, and seemed like everything going out, and I don't know whether, it don't look like, well, I'm making no judgment call on that, but I think we also have to look out and protect the people that are paying. I mean, people are paying out, and so many are struggling down here that just don't have, but look like we keep, you know, up here, we keep, you know, raising, and I'm just making a comment, that's all. Making a statement, whatever you wanna say, you know. And I think, I think, I think when we look and you really, really talk to people that are struggling there, again, again, you know, our taxes are going up, our water bills are going up, and we gotta have something done, what about the sewer and all that, and millions of dollars, and, you know, that's, this is my comment. And I know I don't stand by myself, there are many others, you know, but some will not speak up for themselves, so I guess I'm just speaking for Freddie Sterling, and that's my concern. And where are we gonna get this money from? I'm glad for the police station, I'm glad for, that's wonderful, you know, but, and I'm sure that... Well, these are some things that I was concerned, I was concerned about the other people that are working for the city, are they getting it? I understand it's coming out now, I mean, so that's my concern. And my concern, my last concern is, I've been down here time after time, and I hate to bring this up, and I've talked to Mr. Scott, and he know my concern, and it has not changed. And no one has asked me my concern. As a taxpayer, I stood here, and the council addressed, and Mr. Scott said he would listen to me, but that's the only one. And it still stands the way that I was treated.
If this is, if, we're just taking comments right now on the salary...
Okay, I'm saying it because some may not be on this council, makes you hear, or whatever, you know, and my feeling's still the same, you know. And it seems as though there are certain ones can get what they desire, and others can be turned away without anything. I'm done.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. On these, on the, yes, sir, yes, sir.
My name is Mike Elmer, I'm 620 Iowa Street here in Burlington, and I'm gonna follow up on this gentleman's comments, if I may. If I'm understanding correctly, the city manager, who if I understand correctly, of the 250 city managers that report throughout the country, he is the highest paid, is now in line for a 2.25% increase?
That's incorrect, he's not the highest paid.
No.
Not any longer?
Not by far.
He never was, he's never been the highest paid, that's just...
Of the 250 that report, I'm not saying of the balance that don't report.
No.
But of the 250 that report, he was listed number one.
That's news to me.
My concern, my concern, and I hear this from people all over, there's a large majority of this population in Burlington that is elderly, they're on fixed incomes. They see their property taxes going up, they see their water bill, they see their electric bill, they see every part of their life going up. We've got a city council, we've got a city manager, these people make good money. Our city manager, you know, I've come from an area with much larger populations with similar type governments that don't make the kind of money some people here make, and the concern that I think this gentleman's trying to express is there comes a limit of what people can actually pay, and when they see a man that makes a substantial salary, I'm not saying he doesn't deserve an increase. I think what he's trying to say is the taxpayers that struggle need to also be considered in these increases. And I've heard that from hundreds of people within this town in my time of being back here, that perhaps the council doesn't take these things into consideration. I'm not saying you do or don't. I'm expressing what, things that have been said to me on behalf of citizens of this city. And I'm not saying the man doesn't do a good job, I'm not saying he doesn't deserve an increase along with the other people. I'm just maybe trying to help clarify some of what he's trying to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel? The only thing I would say that I would like just like to add before we do vote is, I hear people say, well, you guys never consider nobody else's getting a raise. I understand that, I understand that. You know, I'm like, my job, I'm not getting a raise this year either, I understand that. Not everybody gets a raise, I understand that we've got aging people. I'm thinking about these people in every decision that I make, but they're still getting, not getting around giving people their money. You know, we, from the outside looking in, people say, well, they're getting a raise, but if it was you, you know what I'm saying? If it was you working, and you worked for a company, you'd want a raise just like everybody else does, and they, we had negotiations. That's the raise they got. You can say, people will say, well, he's of the higher paid, look at the city managers. I don't like the pay, I think it's too much, I do, but that's the rate that they have. I mean, there's no getting around that, so I would just like people to keep an open mind as they're on the outside looking in and saying, well, hey, why are they spending that money? Things do go up, that's just the way it is, that's the world that we live in, and it's, it's not nice, but that's the world that we live in. And just like the water bills that go up for everybody else, they're going up for me, you know, I gotta pay it too. The utility bills that go up, they're going up for me, I gotta pay them too. The neighborhood that I live in, a lot of elderly people, I see these people all the time, and I know what they're going through. So, we think about these things, but the decision still has to get made, and sometimes we have to look like the bad guy, but somebody's gotta make that decision, the city's gotta keep rolling on. That's all I've gotta say to that. Counsel, anything else?
I just, I would add to that, we are required by law to negotiate with the unions. We were required to negotiate on a much greater level than what we are now. We're required to negotiate, if we don't come to an agreement with the unions, then we're, it goes to binding arbitration, and we have to accept what an administrative law judge says we have to pay to our unions. And they, the, as I've been told, that these administrative law judges don't take into consideration the council's feelings or the, or the union's feelings. What they look at is the ability of the city to levy the taxes and pay what's being asked by the, by the unions. And they may take one thing away from the union and add another thing, but it's, what it boils down to is, if we don't come to an agreement, then we have to accept what the administrative law judge says we have to accept. So, we come to an agreement, a five-year contract, right, Stephanie? 2.25% pay increase on an annual basis, and that's what we ended up with, with the unions. Then, the council looks at what we paid the union employees, and we do non-union employees the same. That's the way it's been traditionally, I mean, right or wrong, that's the way it's been. But we also consider that a lot of these individuals, the city manager, the public works director, the development director, finance director, police chief, fire chief, et cetera, when we look at comparisons to other cities our size, we find out a lot of times that we're, that we've been way under. And when we are, it's hard to keep those employees, or it's hard to fill their positions when an employee retires. And that's, that's really difficult to, for me to fathom, for me to understand, I don't know why, that the salaries of government employees are so much higher than what the private sector are now. 25 years ago, it used to be the opposite, because of legislation that was passed and afterward, that's changed. And it is, it is what it is now. And all we're doing tonight with the city manager's increase is making his equal to what everybody else's is, and hope to be able to keep him around another year and keep pressing on lowering our debt, our debt service, our deficit accounts, et cetera, so that we can have a more favorable tax rate for all the people in Burlington.
Can you come to the microphone, maybe?
My comments were not intended to say he didn't deserve a raise, I was just trying to express some opinions.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
I was responding to all of it, including the mayor, so that's all.
Okay. We good down there?
I do want you to know that my no vote does not mean I don't appreciate Jim for no, because I do, but it's a matter of principle with me, so...
Okay. Any other comments?
Kathleen?
We're gonna have commentary.
Fleming?
Hi.
McCambo?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
No.
Okay, this is the time we'll entertain comments from the audience. Anybody from the audience that has any comments, anything we haven't covered? Mike or Mark?
Nothing big here, but since I made that donation last year for the free swim days, I got an invite to the first one to have a free lunch. Well, I was so busy, needless to say, I skipped the free lunch, but I noticed that there was four tables there and no umbrellas, so I contacted my great friends at Pepsi, Pepsi Refreshments here, and I just got a call from Larry today to confirm if the umbrellas aren't there already, they're on their way, they donated four umbrellas for the pool area.
Good job.
You're a rock star, my friend.
Have I given you an award already? That's awesome, Crowder.
I don't know if I wanna bug myself, I tried to call you.
Oh, you tried to call me?
No.
Him. Did you? Dude, that's awesome. That's awesome. Anybody else from the audience comments? Yes, sir.
Steve Rollin, 2838 Main Street, South Main Street. And when I say south, it's south of the Cascade Bridge. So what do we think about the Cascade Bridge? Is anything going to happen in the next 10 years?
I sure hope so. We don't have a plan in place as of today.
Okay. Because the last effort was spent, the city spent, my understanding, was about $350,000 on Klingner, and they came up with a design that turned into Dankworth Park, which violated the state's scenic bypass, which follows the Mississippi River. But that's the wrong term, but the engineering was in error. And I would hope that whenever the new program starts up, that people would have an opportunity to be involved in the comments about the design. Thank you.
Is there another?
Chief.
Before I talk about this, just briefly, I want to make sure that we get it out there tomorrow afternoon.
I was going to talk about it, too.
Okay.
I'm glad you did.
Yeah, and I just want to have a special thanks here to a few people that have been to every meeting and have put in an awful lot of work. And first and foremost, Reverend Freddie Starling, he's been to every one of our meetings. He's participated in this thing from the get-go. Thanks, Ray. Appreciate it. Tomorrow, he's going to be cooking ribs, but he's got to compete with our pork loin, so we'll see.
It's going down tomorrow.
Yeah, so thanks. I really appreciate it. Vince Copeland with the South Hill Neighborhood Association. Again, he's been to all of our meetings and very active.
No doubt.
Chief Matt Trexel from the Fire Department, been very supportive.
Good job, chief.
Cooking some chicken or something. I want to thank Hy-Vee for... They're going to supply water and ice for the whole afternoon. Circle K, they actually stepped forward and paid for the special events permit, so thanks to Special K. The Hawkeye, the newspaper's been very supportive. I mean, Christie Air has just been to every meeting, tremendous amounts of work with the advertising. They actually bought the basketball... The portable basketball hoops, and they're going to donate those to the Maple Leaf Center. Nate Williams from the Maple Leaf Center, again, he's participated in all of our meetings and been very active. Major Darren Grimshaw, I can't thank him enough. He's been crazy active in this thing, and without him, it probably wouldn't have happened. So thanks, Darren. Kempers are going to supplies with a bounce house and some... A couple tents to put up there in the streets. So we're going to close the street around 3:00. Probably start drilling around that 5:00 timeframe, so stop by anytime after that, at 6:00, 6:30, and enjoy some eats. And then hopefully, we'll have some participation around 9:30 and transport some folks out to the fireworks show in West Burlington and get them back safely. So thanks again to everybody that's helped us with the project. Hopefully, a lot of people show up and have a good time.
How much is the charge for eating?
No, it's free. Everything's free.
Wow.
Take a sip.
I could go and get some chicken or whatever, and then come back.
Well, you could come and get some pork loin. Yeah, I'd recommend that.
Some chicken or whatever. I don't know.
I'm having ribs, so...
That's right. Hey, Starley's doing ribs, the police are doing pork loin, and the fire department's doing mystery meat. But it's going to be a good time. It's going to be a good time. Man, you started it. You just started it back up. Chuck, any closer remarks, my friend?
No.
All right. Antoinette, closing remarks?
Well, absolutely. Obviously, the chief stole my thunder. It looks like a great time. I wish I could be there, but I've got... I'm going to be out of town. The food sounds wonderful. I love food, so...
I'll eat pork loin.
Thursday, of course, is the farmer's market. Need to see some more people out there. There's all kinds of stuff going on, food trucks and produce and crafts, things like And on, let's see, the 7th, which is Friday, the outdoor... The Fifth and Valley Outdoor Movie. They're going to be showing Sing for children. I mean, it's a children's movie.
Never heard of it.
That's okay. That's at 7:30. That's what... Thank you. Happy Fourth of July.
All righty. Thank you, counselor. Tim Scott.
Yeah. For... I've got a few things, mayor.
We've got to save you for last. You know what? We're going to bypass you, and I'll come back to you. You got a list.
Oh, wait. Wait, wait.
You had one more? Did you have one more?
Kind of, yeah.
Go ahead.
The Symphonic Blast is also happening. Yes.
Saturday night.
Today. At Crapo Park, the Bandshell. Fireworks to follow. That should be a good time.
It is a good time.
So bring your lawn chair, come out, get some bug spray, maybe. I don't know how the bugs are.
Right on.
Okay.
I just want to... I want to say that fireworks are illegal within city limits. So that out there.
Are you reading my notes?
I'm going to say that again. Fireworks are legal within city limits. So I post on my Facebook page, I've got three friends in Burlington, so make sure you pass it and share it along. But fireworks are illegal within city limits. We've got older people that it freaks them out. We've got some war veterans that it freaks them out, you know? There's a lot of houses. We've got old houses. It's just caused some problems. So we just need to be responsible, and so I just want to throw that out there to all the five people that are watching that do fireworks, you know? So again, just asking everybody to be patient. And just to throw out a reminder, I know that it's going to be uncomfortable for some that don't like fireworks. It's not the Fourth of 2017. It's the Fourth of July, so we're just going to get past these next couple of days, and things will get back to normal. So hang in there, and I guess that's it. Mayor Proton?
You were reading my notes.
I was reading your notes. I stole your thunder.
I attended the Juneteenth celebration last... When was it? It was Saturday, and I had a bite to eat, which was very good. And it was nice to be there and see a nice turnout, and I think it was a good day. That's all I have to say at this time, but I reserve the right to add to it at a later time.
They said after he ate his food, he sunbathed and fell asleep in the grass for about two hours. I'm going to check with Reverend Starling on that to find out if it's true. We'll talk to you after the meeting. Assistant Manager?
As you may notice, the security fencing has gone up down at the riverfront for the upcoming flood wall project. I think that the extent of the security fencing is probably further than what was talked about. Unfortunately, coming into the Fourth of July, we won't be able to move it. There's some boat docks that are not being accessible right now, so hopefully, we can get that changed. So please bear with us.
And the roundabout?
The roundabout, they poured on Saturday. They have... They're moving on it. I sent all a link to a YouTube video of somebody that had to drone, so they're moving on it. So hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, it'll be done pouring, and then they can start doing grading work in the lights, so...
Okay. Tim Scott.
Thank you, mayor. My daughter, I've mentioned her several times the last few months. My oldest daughter just finished running 137 miles.
That's insane.
In six days, not seven. On her last day, she ran 37 miles, and she finished at about 4:00 Saturday. Her feet and ankles were swollen bigger than my arm, and she ran like that, with those like that, for three days. She had a lot of help on Saturday. Several family members and friends ran with her to keep her motivated and keep her going. And she just... She accomplished something that I think few can do.
Amen to that.
Oh, my gosh.
She's a super jock, is what she is.
She's a superstar.
She's got everything that all the rest of the family doesn't. She's just... And she's a great kid. She's done it for the right cause. MS is a terrible disease. She wanted to bring attention to the disease. Her mother and her sister has it. Her sister's very, very sick with it, and that's what motivated her and kept her going. A couple of other things that I had, it's not so fun to talk about, but the mayor was talking about the fireworks in town. We do have a lot of people in town selling fireworks, and they've decided to use our rideaway to do their advertising. And we have Friday and today, I saw trucks trying to do locates on agency where we've got a construction project about to start, and there are signs, banners, and flags in the way, and these guys are having to work around these. They shouldn't be there in the first place. That's the reason why we have city rideaways. It's for utilities, and it's for projects that we've got going on, and we don't need to deal with that kind of stuff. On Friday, I'm driving down Roosevelt, and in the median between the northbound lanes and the southbound lanes is this big sign that says fireworks, and it's pointing towards the tent next to Hartland Harvey Davidson. And there's a young lady out there with the sign. She's holding up the sign, "We're open." And not only is she holding up the sign, she's leaning into traffic on both sides. That's a distraction. It's dangerous, and it should not have happened, and something should have been done about it, and I should have called it in, and I didn't. I got... I was too busy. It didn't, and that makes me feel as guilty as the idiot that was doing it. That should not have happened. That's dangerous. Those vehicles are traveling at 40 mile an hour plus because the speed limit's 40 miles per hour. There's 20,000 vehicles that cross that intersection every single day, and on Friday, it was extra busy. That shouldn't have happened. We need to do something about it. The other thing, I... For whatever reason, this weekend, when I was able to take calls, I was inundated with phone calls about our decision to expand the employees' distance that they can live from the city. And I had some conversations that these citizens were pretty upset about it. And I tried to explain some of the position that I had on it and that some of the other council had on it, but they feel that if a city employee is making the kind of wages that they're making, that they should be inside the city paying taxes. And I promised some of the citizens that I would make mention of that to them. And some of the arguments that they had, I felt, were justified. This may be something that will have to be visited again in the future if this continues and if you all start getting the same phone calls. Fourth thing I wanted to mention, and this is probably the most irritating and most upsetting of any time that I've ever been on council of anything to happen, and that's, we have a man running through the city firing a semi-automatic weapon, shooting into cars, shooting into homes, having a running battle down the street, and they dropped the charges in the interest of justice. We sent our police officers into a battle zone, and we're able to arrest two individuals, caught them in the act, and arrested two individuals. We put their lives at risk, every citizen in that neighborhood. The holes that are in the side of houses and cars are evidence that a battle took place. And for whatever reason, our county attorney dropped the charges in the interest of justice. I don't know who... I don't know why the criminals are more entitled to justice than what the citizens are. This is... That is extremely scary. I fear for everybody's life in this community when that is allowed to happen.